He's close.
We can start.
We've been having good and we're still waiting for Mario to get here, but let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. I hereby call this meeting to order. It is the Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, meeting of the Village of Oxford Planning Commission. And it's now seven o'clock, I hereby call this meeting to order. As we always do, I ask you please stand and join me in maintaining our respect for the flag with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Madam Secretary, could you find out who to call a role for this evening's meeting?
Bama, Edson, Curtis.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Douglas.
Here.
Helmet.
Here.
Ballard.
Here.
Madam Secretary, I received a communication from Rose Bama today asking to be excused from tonight's meeting. She's indisposed, and so I'd ask for a motion to excuse Commissioner Bama from this evening's meeting.
So moved.
And a second. All right. We have a motion on the floor excusing Commissioner Bama's absence. With a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. Rose, your absence is excused for this evening, wish her the best. All right, now moving on to item four, I would entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda, which is before you, dated September 17th, 2019. So moved.
So moved.
All right. Madam Secretary, once again, I have a motion on the floor to approve tonight's agenda, and a second for that. All those in favor of accepting tonight's agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, we have an approved agenda. I then turn to item five, which is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, which was held August 20th, 2019. Those minutes are before you, and hopefully you've had a chance to review those. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes from the previous meeting dated August 20th, 2019.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? All right, good, thank you. Madam Secretary, I have countless motions and countless seconds on that approval of the previous minutes dated August 20th, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Any care to jump gun? All right, no, good. All right, we have approved minutes. All right.
Mario's here.
Good. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence to file for this evening?
There is no correspondence.
No correspondence, thank you very much, I appreciate that. We are not holding a public hearing tonight, so we'll skip over item seven. I see that our planner has just walked in, so that's good news, because we're just in time to have him join.
Simon is everything.
Mario, how are you this evening?
Great, Mario.
Are you hungry?
I'm okay.
Okay, good. As you can see, we have sandwiches. Thank Commissioner Duncan for that. That takes us on to item eight, which is old business. Tomorrow, I'll give you a few minutes to compose yourself and get ready. And we appreciate you being here, and we're going to discuss recreational marijuana again this evening.
Mario, I'll probably not be offended if you like to get a sandwich this evening.
I wouldn't be offended either.
I'm okay, actually. I did have a late lunch. I was gonna try to get here earlier, but one thing I do have to apologize for is I was going to be bringing maps to show us alternatives for how many spots we could have in the I-1, but unfortunately, the map guy didn't understand what I was trying to convey to him, so we just couldn't get those maps done. But that's something that I can, as soon as they're done, I'll email them to you all so you can take a look. But... So with that, having said that, I would think, unless anyone has any different ways to go through it, we can just walk through the ordinance again, you know, page by page, and go over the changes and see. And at any point in time, feel free to interrupt me to have any questions or concerns or any ideas you might have thought of as you review these latest revisions. But the first one is in the definition section, is that I did add the classes for the growers. I wanted to jump right in, just to be thorough, to ensure that we're all aware of...
That's a question.
Yeah.
Please.
Mario?
Yes.
Uh, typo.
Oh, great.
I like to find those, it makes me feel...
No, no, you just could...
Satisfied.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, in your new language there, second line, facility to grow not more than the following number of marijuana.
Yeah, yeah.
Spelled with the H instead of the J.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a question since we're talking about that typo?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Do we have a statement in here about marijuana with a J is the same thing as marijuana with an H?
Uh, not yet.
Have you seen it over there?
Not yet. I think we do need one. I wasn't gonna run it past the lawyer, but then I realized, oh, he's gonna have to look at all of this anyway. So I'll just craft my own, put it in there, and see what he says, if it's sufficient for our purposes to, in our attempt to educate the state legislature.
Thank you.
So thank you for that, though.
I was gonna say, I would find out if he was mistaken. What does it say?
And the rest of those definitions, we've already talked about.
Yes.
And it looks to me like you added item 13, which is temporary marijuana intent. Is that correct?
Well, that one's from Einstein, it's just a bit numbered, the new number, because it's the addition, the change. The next significant change is just indicate on page two, paragraph B1, adding item map, marijuana secure transporter, just to make sure that, as requested, that's a facility that could be located within the village, is one of our facilities. All the other language in that paragraph B stays the same. Then paragraph C is where there's a significant change, although it didn't end up taking too much to do to change our locations, because as we discussed, we wanted to have, rather than try and consider having something in a C district, just focus everything in the I-1 district on Glasby Street on the south side of the village. So by merely, jump down to paragraph four, I merely is adding that sentence, I think that works. All uses listed in the section above should be permitted as a special land use on parcels whose front lot line is the Glasby Street right-of-way line and are located in the I-1 industrial district. I did take a look at all the other parcels that are in that set lower section of industrial that are zoned industrial. Only two of them front on what looks like is a private road. There, when you, right before, if you're heading southbound right before you make the curve, there is two uses, and then there is seem like it's a gravel drive, but there does seem like it's a private right-of-way, and then there are two other parcels. So right now, this language will not allow something in those two other parcels.
Is it still I-1?
It's still only zoned I-1, so that's the effect of this language. And then it would also not allow east-of-way, this is...
201E Strainer.
Yeah, so if we wanted to add the Drainer site, I mean, it's a huge site, I wasn't sure if that use would ever go away, but I mean, if we wanted to open up a possibility just to be comprehensive in the entire I-1, we can, and it's just a matter of adding, and also, a parcel that fronts on Drainer, zoned I-1. So we could do that, to be honest with you. But right now, those are the three parcels that are zoned I-1 down there that would not be included with this particular work.
Mario, why did you choose to make this restrictive to Glasby Street right-of-way?
Because I found that...
In light of what you just said, I'm just wondering what your thinking was in that regard?
Just that I thought it was pretty much comprehensive with the majority of the viable sites that could eventually turn into medical marijuana facilities.
Recreational.
Recreational. Thank you.
Yes, adult use, thank you.
Jumping back and forth, changing, turning, yes, for the adult-use facilities that seem to be the most comprehensive, we can word that the other way to include those. I think, the other issue, though, that was facing was the fact that I'm not sure...
Let me help you here.
Thank you, sir.
I think the reason we said I-1 on Glasby is because you have I-1 where the stamping plant is.
Right.
On the polyentire.
Right. I was just wondering if there was another way to differentiate.
I would like to differentiate it another way, in my own opinion.
Sure.
Than just Glasby Street. It could be I-1 south of I-1 to include only those on Glasby and Drainer that have Stub Street that goes up.
I think that's Stub Street, I think that's industrial drive.
Yeah, I think that's what it is, let's see if it shows.
What are we talking about right here?
Yeah.
Does anybody want to take a look at that?
Yeah, thank you, that's very nice of you.
So this, this industrial drive, all stuff there?
Right.
I don't know that it's actually, I need a map.
Yeah.
I, you know, if you could word that, just Glasby up, what we were trying to do is to not, not have it on center of the fire station and...
That's correct.
Right now.
Okay, now what will we do when somebody comes back to ask us, or ask us if they can have a storefront on Washington?
Can't.
Is...
I understand.
I understand. You know somebody's gonna wanna do that.
They can apply for either an amendment to this ordinance, or to other property rezon.
How will we deal with that?
We won't.
They're actually allowed to request, you can always ask them.
The applicant can come in and say, yes, I wanna do that, and then they would go to the ZBA, or it would be, they have to pay for an ordinance review.
Does the planning commission do res zoning? Not, does not?
Yeah, it would be, planning commission would make a recommendation to the village council.
The ZBA would be if you're going for a use there, and we don't allow use there.
Right.
We're snarky.
Well, I realize we're not faced with that right now, but you can imagine that it's gonna come.
You will be.
You know it's gonna come.
I mean, it happens in today's scenario, I wanna open up an R-1.
Well, the only thing I would say to that is that, in terms of any request for a rezoning, you're gonna have to meet the same merits as any other use, and unless they, and so they would have to abide, they would, the first thing we'd look at is a master plan to see if we're planning for industrial on Washington, if we are not, to the best of my knowledge. And all the other host of criteria that, to make sure that any industrial rezoning would be compatible with the adjacent zoned and used property. And because Washington is such a commercial corridor, because it is so much closer proximity to residential, I mean, I won't say it couldn't happen, but the probability of it would be pretty remote. And I have, one other thing, just to remind you that we are just trying to try this out in the industrial. And if it does work out, and then if we find the retail component is no different than any other, then we could probably, you know, reexamine and open it up to the idea of it being allowed in a commercial district. Because in the end, it does, you know, we don't know how the market's gonna react, but the market does seem to indicate that they are gonna wanna try out a multitude of these outlets.
Sure.
But, as we talked about a couple meetings ago, I think the issue is gonna be, you could have a dearth of these in the beginning, everybody's gonna try and muscle in, and then eventually it'll settle down, and depending on where the money comes from and how it is determined in the end by the market, there might be, just be, like, a few players because of, who knows how many, who knows what quantity's gonna be used.
See, Jack has a question.
That's right.
Okay, so to fix this, I'd have to say, shall be permitted as a special land use on parcels, front lot line is the Glasby Street, Drainer, and, what's the name of that?
Industrial drive.
You just add those two streets in there, because the only I-1 property on Drainer in the village is the old Baron Cast, so...
All right, so is everybody agreed that we should...
What did you just say?
Was the old Baron Cast.
201E Strainer?
Yeah.
No, it wasn't, it was automotive accessories.
Before that.
Before the 50s?
No, 60s, 70s.
I'll take your word for it, I'm not that old.
All right, so...
I'm not!
So are we agreeing that I wanna change the restriction in the I-1 district as something like what Jack says?
Yeah.
Include those three properties?
Yeah.
Yeah, you agree?
Yes.
Would you agree?
I would be.
Mo, you agree?
That's fine, Jerry, could you make sure, check with Doug, that Stub is industrial drive?
Yeah, that name is just critical.
I was gonna do the same thing, but I'll let you do it.
Google Maps?
I was about to, yeah.
Sometimes Google is reliable, sometimes it's not. But it doesn't hurt, we'll double-check whatever it was that says.
It's called... And this one says Glasby Road.
It says South Glasby.
This one here says Glasby Road, so...
Yeah, this one says South Glasby.
I'll research, make sure that I write one.
You understand the intent, I mean, and specifically, Mario, you could even say something like, I-1 located south of Scripter Park, you know, because then it doesn't make any difference what the road names are.
That's right.
You know, that horse has beaten to death, a bunch of things.
Can we move up before we move on from...
Yeah, of course. I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna skip that. Yes.
If everyone's ready to move up, if that's okay, to childcare facility schools. So, we talked about this a little bit last time, and I suggested leaving it in, because I think it serves as a good protection in the residents' eyes that, you know, these businesses aren't gonna be right next to a school. When we looked at, Mario, it was matched from last time, we saw the buffer zones around Oxford Elementary and Daniel Exford, and it didn't come near the industrial area. I think that Virtual Academy, I don't know how close that is, and I'm not sure where all their childcare facilities, daycare facilities are, so I'm wondering if we should limit C-1 to just elementary schools or schools and remove the childcare facilities, daycare facilities.
Like your thought, because there are too many that are clandestine, but are there legally?
Right.
Well, that is one thing, that I did check the LAURA State Registry for the number of childcare centers, or even daycares, or even daycare homes. And there are very, there are very few licensed facilities located in the village, most of them actually located in the township. The ones that are licensed are the ones located in, you mentioned the church, I forget the name of the church.
Holy Cross.
Yes, that's one of them, and then in the schools.
High School Elementary, yeah.
Yep, so those are the ones that are licensed. And, and, you know, we'd be hard-pressed to say that we wanna protect, you know, a facility like a childcare center if they don't have a license. If they don't have a license, you know, number one should be, they need to go get a license and make themselves legal, because the licensure of the state for childcare is very important. But then, number two, it's to, if you, you would be kind of placing a burden upon marijuana, adult-use marijuana facilities, if they try and even have to deal with, while they're coming in as a fully licensed and legal use, that they somehow have to protect themselves, go out, not go out of the way, but also factor in protecting them, protecting, not in the illegal, but on the unlicensed childcare. So that's why I left all the state laws in there, and codes for that, and I even added a sentence, or licensed daycare facility licensed by the state of Michigan Department of Licenseed Labor Affairs, because I think, I think the bill, it's the most appropriate.
Kelsey, how is this different than what you would prefer to have?
I would prefer just to have there be a buffer between the adult-use facilities and the two elementary schools that we have in the village, and not get into the daycare and childcare facilities, because then you're dealing with all of the, whether they're licensed, whether they're not, and I think it just opens up a little bit of exposure. I mean, I think putting the school names in the ordinance if we can, kinda like how we have the park, is direct and easy to understand and clear, so hopefully, I think that would help us. And I think that is, I would think that that's gonna be some of the residents' concerns, being around elementary schools. I mean, obviously daycare centers are different, too, but you can choose a daycare center where you wanna send your children, I mean, your school is the school that you're gonna be going to, besides school choice and stuff like that, so, that was my thought, anyway. So, just to clean it up a little bit and make it more direct.
Do you have any thoughts on that? Take it out.
Mo, I'm with it.
Ms. Leslie?
So I was just, I guess I'm a little uncertain what you think the impact would be to leave in the licensed daycare facilities, I'm not following that very well.
Because I don't know where they are located at, so I'm not sure if it's gonna impact any of the areas that we want to allow the adult-use facilities, and until we map it for sure, and then, what if something pops up before we, the ordinance is passed, it's just a lot more...
I have looked at it, there's 13 in the township, there are none in this cultural precinct area here. The only ones in the village are at the schools and at the church. Those are the only ones, there aren't any others in the village.
What would happen if we pass this ordinance, and I'm gonna open one at 450 Glasby Street, and somebody licenses a daycare center in Oxford Lakes?
It all depends on when the license was issued, and if it's current, and when the application for the facility was. Because at the time of the application of the facility, one of the things we'll get into when we, when we get down to the ordinance is that they would have to provide us with a map, indicating where, what other school or childcare facility is located. So if there isn't any there at the time that they're applying...
The application.
The application, then, because, you know, we can't, because we go through this entire process, and then an adult facility comes in, simply because a childcare facility chooses to locate there, that can be a burden on, on that user. They made everything, they did it with diligence, they did it with...
I can see some benefit to, as long as it doesn't restrict the location of marijuana facilities, I can imagine that the general public reading through the ordinance would see, number one, with the existing languages, as a little more protective, and it might reassure people a little, as long as it doesn't really restrict access to the I-1, I guess I would make the point that I can see a benefit if we leave it in, and I can't see any problems with taking it out, but...
That was, Kelsey, that was my thought, too.
What about the Virtual Academy? Because that does come into the I-1 district, but maybe it's the same buffer as Scripter Park, I'm not sure, how much they overlap. And I don't know much about the Virtual Academy, because I assume it's, it would fall underneath this paragraph, though.
Oh, it's considered a school.
It is, okay.
Well, it would, it would impact.
It's in the, it's in the strip mall down there?
Yeah.
Next, by the Salvation Army, there.
Yep, okay. Me, buddy.
Yeah, well...
Okay, well, sorry.
You are correct, it would, it would impact some of the parcels on the north, and so that is something to consider. But, you know, at that point in time, then we're picking and choosing which type of school would or would not be protected, because if we did that, then that would be a blank bedrock hole, or something, then the lawyer I could see would come in and say, well, of course, in this case, we're not, we're actually opening it up for them, so they wouldn't necessarily find it. And restricted would actually be beneficial for them, so they wouldn't say anything. So you're, I get, I can see your point, that, yeah, that would open up those additional locations. But there are, is...
See, Mario, it'll be, it'll be the alternate of that, actually, it'll be the attorney for the adult-use center that wants to locate at the north end of the Drainer, or the Glasby industrial corridor, who's gonna complain that the site that he picked right there at the north end is 1,000 feet within Virtual Academy, but Virtual Academy is not a real school, virtual school.
They can worry about that.
Yeah?
In the end, that would be part of it, because that'll be something, I'm sure, that in other locations, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more of that, well, it depends on the applicant, depends on their situations, and I could see in some other community, you probably postpartum school, they could find, they could, someone could feel that they've been, you know, it's too restrictive on them, that distance. But then chances are, it would be another, I don't know, I guess I could see it actually happening here, because it is a virtual academy, the perception that it is, but it's also licensed to public facility, it's, it's binding by all the other state laws, so we kind of, I don't know, that's a, that's a kind of a tough one. Because we, we'd have to then not include the schools. If we wanted to not have that 1,000-foot buffer from the Virtual Academy, I'd say we might have to eliminate all the school reductions.
You can get a legal opinion on that.
I'm sorry?
Rather than beat the death out of it here, we can get a legal opinion on that from the bottom.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
Given what it is, and with the question of virtual driving, let it...
That's a good one.
That sounds good.
Would you be willing to, to go along with that?
Absolutely.
Attorney opinion?
Yeah, I'm curious about that.
And then one way we can kind of address that issue of being, being too restrictive is looking at some of our other factors, because if we go down further in the ordinance and the setbacks, paragraph three of the marijuana facility buffer, right now I have it listed as 500, but if we reduce that, then you can open up the number of facilities that would be allowed within the industrial district.
That was gonna suggest that you change...
And then that could be...
1,000 to 500 feet.
Yeah, yeah. Changing the buffer distances to allow for more, so that way, people wouldn't necessarily feel that they're being restricted, and we can tell them, you know, we're, we're trying, we're, we're feeling with these buffer protections, they are protecting the facilities, protecting the assets in the, there are existing community, but opening, creating enough of a market to test the waters, which is what we're trying to do.
All right, so Mario, will you do that? Will you be able to set that up to get some legal advice on that, perhaps?
Yes, yeah.
All right, buddy.
Didn't we, had way too many meanings, because didn't we talk about, as far as 500 feet from another one, making that a smaller number, because, we talked about just not letting them have the same lot line, I thought we talked about changing that to 250 feet?
We did.
Because that would make it be like every other lot?
Yes, and that's what, that's what we would have been looking at on the maps, that's what I was trying to, I wanted to show you something where there's 100 foot between each facility, 250 between each facility, and then 500, so you get an idea of how many quantity of facilities you would have.
But for some reason, I'm playing with what Kelsey said, I think we talked about 500 feet from the schools.
Oh, similarly, is what you're saying, and instead of adding 1,000, adding 500, yeah.
But I have these conversations in my head sometimes, so if you guys weren't there, but I thought we did.
I see what you're saying.
I have no understanding, don't have any idea about that.
Do you have any conversation about the, that one, the same lot line?
I remember that, but I didn't make a note about it, but I don't remember... My notes sat there, wondering what 200 would be, but, yeah. It was gonna be based on seeing the map, I thought.
Yeah, I think that's what the map, yeah, because it's basically pushing and pulling the different numbers, and trying to figure out what number, what distance setbacks, well, we would all, you would be comfortable with, in terms of having enough facilities, and having, and also the idea of, you know, creating a dearth, I mean, that's...
Kind of related to number one is number two, the public parks, where we only call it Scripter Park.
Right.
Do, if we add Centennial Park, it's not going to affect our I-1 district at all. Would we be safer putting in both of our main parks versus just the one that's nearby the area?
If you're limiting it to the I-1 and Glasby and Drainer, they're far enough away from Centennial, we don't want to put it in there.
Or putting it in wouldn't hurt anything.
Yeah, you're in a way exception of, of protection. Yeah, you're in the either way exception of protection. Yeah, either way, yeah, I think originally I had it in there, I took it out, it was like, this is what we talked about, if you want to put it back in.
That might be another legal question, you know, as far as being challenged about our public parks buffer. Is it better to include the parks, you know, Scripter is very similar to, yeah.
So that way we're not opening ourselves up to, well, why is it open, it could be close to one and not the rest, I see.
Just say public park.
As long as they don't, yeah.
Fish park.
Fish park.
Is that something, you just- I know, I think if I remember right, we didn't include, we included the name specifically because I believe Leslie had mentioned that the Pollyanna Trail is considered a park, and so that would have saved us either the way that's intended. Correct, but, yeah, it was-
I think that might be how we ended up with it that way. So, that it was defining the park that has the most, biggest bearing on the area. But, yeah, that's right, because...
All right, so how do we deal with this? Do we name parks, or do we call them parks, or do we just-
Public parks, that's how I would do it.
Public parks.
That's just my idea.
Like, public parks, and I think that it also, you were talking about earlier, Mr. Chairman, the challenge, you know, if someone wants to put a facility, adult use facility in the commercial district, then you can still, at least that part of the standards would still stand, there would be a barrier with Centennial Park.
As it is, are we putting in public park?
Putting in public park.
Ms. Leslie?
Chairman, come on.
I'm just trying to think if there's any of the parks over the gardens, but Lakes is private. Trying to think if there's anything else.
Mario, so, um, yeah?
Wait a minute, will you go to your public park? And then just as a preview of our initial, or our next conversation in regards to planning with the setback distances, the statute actually says marijuana establishments should not be located within one thousand feet of a pre-existing public or private school, writing education and kindergarten, or any of grades one through twelve. Oh, unless the municipality adopts an ordinance that reduces this requirement. So, we do have the option. So, there you go, Mario. So, now, we do have the option of reducing our, and it makes sense because of the size of our little village, so we can change that, so.
So, why did we add in all of the childcare, licensed daycare facility?
That's a standard practice for adult type of uses, so that's, that's right, it's in there, so, yeah, that's another way that it could be altered.
All right, continue, Mario. I think we're all agreeing that we eliminated paragraph four B, so that's what I think, very much.
There will be public parks, and there will be changes for the marijuana facility under, and then going on to paragraph D, use requirements, where it goes specifically into some of the ways in which the facility would be operated. Paragraph two, added that new sentence stating retailers and retail operations in marijuana microbusiness shall only be open from nine a.m. to nine p.m. So, pretty close hours, that's the time I had the last time. With regards to wastewater, we kind of were, without having an expert in the, what could possibly be located within the wastewater of a grow or processing facility, we wanted to get some input, some, we were going back and forth on what would be the levels, or what would be appropriate to make sure it doesn't negatively impact the sewer treatment of the village, and so basically, that's why I thought the easiest way would be to say, "That shall be determined by the village engineer," because, you know, those, if we put in any kind of quantity for any kind of chemical or anything, you know, those can change as studies get developed over time, and then they might be reduced, they might be increased, so if we just reference the village engineer, the village engineer can look up the most recent standards to ensure that whatever comes out of a marijuana facility isn't going to negatively impact sewer capacity of the community.
Madam Secretary, do we have a village engineer?
We have somebody from Laurel, yeah.
All right. All right, continue, Mario, thank you.
Okay, and then as we go into paragraph five, security requirements, we did, I did take out that first part of approved, because I referenced it down further. We did want to, we did talk about the fact that we want to make sure that not only the building, but the sites and the parking lot are secure as well. So, in the middle of that paragraph, added the language to state that, it is kind of a worded sentence, but I think it's still effective. The buildings housing the marijuana facility shall all be equipped with security cameras, provided police maintain an operational order, installed in such a way as to monitor the perimeter of the buildings, including on parking lots and areas accessible by individuals, and capable of recording and storing both on and off-site, minimum one hundred and twenty hours of perimeter monitoring. So, I think that kind of covered all our concerns, because it will be a redundant system with this phrase, and all these are requirements of the state, and they typically require, they do require on and off-site redundancy, and but I think it is a good catch to include, make sure the parking lots are secure, because people need to feel safe when there's these locations.
Excuse me, question, is a hundred and twenty hours standard?
It appears to be.
I mean, there's only five days.
Yeah.
It's enough, though, because if you have an incident occur, you'd know that you had, perhaps, security recognition of that on video, that you could capture then. So, I don't think that's unreasonable, that's a lot of data.
And that's the thing, it's continuous, so it's a lot, I don't know how many terabytes that is.
That's a lot of data.
It's a chunk of HD footage, and then finally I added the last section, last paragraph, a sentence, "All security plans shall be approved by the state and the village box or private operationary marijuana facility," because we wanted to make sure they're both, the state and village approve of plans.
And the state has a process for approving a security plan, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, they have, they have a very extensive and thorough process. The state police come and investigate and put it through its bases for monitoring. So, then the last major change I would be doing here for us today is when we were talking about revocation and suspension, and so I kind of came up with separating the two, and then dealing, trying to deal with them in such a way so that it's pretty clear what could trigger a revocation or suspension, the process they go through, and then whether they can or cannot be reinstated, because that's the questions we all had, we all had to be like, could this person, could this entity come back, you know, what do they actually do, and what triggers this idea of being suspended or revoked. The main, the initial idea is that, so that both of these give the village an option. If someone comes in, they, you know, we have to take them on their word, that they're going to be operating within the law, but if for some reason they slip up, it, because of the two options, you can either let them slip up, and they can correct it, because maybe it's just a minor thing, and can easily correct it, or take the point of saying, "You were a bad player, we do not like to see you in the village again." So, suspension, and the reason I started off with the village manager is the idea that this, the administration can deal with something quickly, and then it's not something that has to wait for the planning commission meeting to occur, or council meeting, and then it's also, so that way the administration can deal with it. So, that's why I stated, "The village manager may suspend a special land use permit based on a finding that is a violation of one of the provisions of special land use standards in this section, any applicable provision of the zoning ordinance, and/or the terms and conditions of special land use and approved site plan." So, it would, it's in the zoning ordinance, so it would limit it to, you know, if they operated in some way, shape, or form, or even if their license became, for some reason, out of compliance, then the village manager has the option of suspending it, and the suspension means, basically, the next sentence implies it, but it says, "The village manager may reinstate a special land use permit if private property owner comes into compliance without violating provision within ninety days of suspension." So, it gives them three months to rectify the situation, so whether they needed to go back to the state and re-register their owners, whether they needed to, you know, do, revise, you know, revise something physical on the site, or something, then it gives them ninety days an opportunity to come back to compliance. And then it says, "If another person comes into compliance after ninety days, village planning commission shall hold a public hearing to consider revocation of the special land use."
Okay, Mario, come close to that saying, maybe it's obvious, but I just want to be clear. If a business operator's special land use permit is revoked, is suspended, are they allowed to continue conducting business?
Well, I would say no, they would not be allowed to.
Should we say that in here? I mean, I, maybe it's obvious, I mean, if your special land use permit is suspended, is it obvious that you're not allowed to conduct business then?
One thing I think, and because we're giving a not, ask you a matter of all the village processes, and Terry probably knows best, does businesses require, have to receive a certificate of occupancy and/or a business license?
I believe so.
We don't have business licenses, just a CBO.
It's a CBO.
But they do need a business license, not for us, don't they, get from the county?
Oh, the county?
From the county.
I mean, it's from the county.
But if the village issues a special land use-
Depending on the business.
-and buying, it can run your business.
Well, yeah, it's different.
That's what, that's a logical assumption.
This would be from the state.
Yeah, for real, maybe, the reason I ask for those other items is because definitely they can't operate without a certificate of occupancy, so, but maybe we need to state something that CBO gets pulled, or...
Wouldn't the village manager lack discretion on that, because-
Right.
Some violations might be minor, and not, you know, not be sufficient to require the revocation of, or the termination of business, suspension of business, is what I guess I'm saying.
Right, because I guess in theory, the idea of a ninety day suspension, and the potential of being revoked, you'd like to think the ninety, the ninety days will put a fire under someone to coming back into compliance. However, yeah, maybe if we included a sentence that says, "The village manager has the option of revoking a certificate of occupancy," then that'll give the village manager two options. Well, yeah, maybe two options, because you'd like to think the village manager, in terms of enforcement policy, first thing they're going to do, if they hear something, call them and say, "Hey, fix this," and if they don't fix it, maybe you send a letter, maybe you write a ticket, maybe you do, but this gives them other options, so other tools in their quiver to say, "All right, what do I have to do to get you to come back?"
I would like to see that added, like I said, and maybe it's obvious, but I know that if you don't say it-
Right.
-somebody's going to fight, you know, and some attorney or a judge is going to say, "Well, you guys didn't say this," you know, so how can you force this person out of business to say that?
No, I think that's a good catch, because that way, like you said, gives the village manager an option to pull the CBO, and really shutting their doors, so. So, with that, the suspension being the idea that they can come back into compliance, revocation would be something in which the planning commission would have the option of reviewing the permit, and then for more than one violation, and then pulling, pulling the permit permanently, and then shutting the business down definitively. And so, as stated, the village planning commission may revoke a special land use permit based on finding marijuana is a violation of more than one of the provisions of the special land use standards in this section, and if it's a zoning ordinance, enter the terms and conditions of special land use. So, it would require them to have two, a minimum of two violations, two separate violations of standards to be revoked. Revocation special land use permits should require the holding of a public hearing and motion the planning commission upon, and then upon revocation, the combination business owner and site shall not be granted another approval within the village of the actual. So, this is my initial attempt, the idea being that the same person can't operate in the same site, and then the opportunity to, once again, be a bad actor, for lack of a better word. So, I don't know if that's sufficient, we want to ban the business owner entirely, a lot of, the only reason I said it in this fashion is because a lot of them are LLCs, and so the person might become a shadow entity, I'm an LLC, here might be gone completely. I think we do at some point have to put some of our faith in the state, because they do require, if there's anything that comes in a violation of any kind of criminal activity, that violates their state license. So, the violation of the state license would be one of the primary things in which then we could say that you're suspending or revoking your special land use permit. So, but I didn't, I wasn't sure if we wanted to just outright say, "The business owner shall be, shall not be granted another approval or not." So, I guess in theory, this does leave the option of the business owner coming back and opening up another site in another location. That's the only thing.
I know a lot of times, like liquor licenses, they just transfer to another family member, and it does no good, so I'm not sure if it's a difference, because that person's still going to be in there, it shouldn't be involved.
When you say business owner, that doesn't necessarily mean individual, like, it could be an LLC, it could be a corporation, or a business is an LLC, so it could just be the same person, or maybe they will LLC, it takes twenty minutes, and then come back and...
But then they would have to reapply to the state, everything, right?
Right, they'd have to, yes, start the whole process again.
And that's one of the things, I don't know if I get it into specifically in our next paragraph, when we talk about supplemental requirements, but seeing this state documentation, even though it's an LLC, they do have to put their state licenses, but documentation is part of the LLC, now, I don't know, it's only a certain percent, people that have a certain percentage of ownership, or what their criteria is.
Do you know if there's a penalty from the state, if we got somebody who's just way out of control, and did all kinds of, and we shut him down, and so we revoked their license, what's the penalty from the state?
And what I know, the way the medical marijuana facility's been operating, is that the state does require, at a minimum, at the beginning of the process, that this local municipality writes a, does an attestation, is what it's called, where we basically certify that this site is in compliance, and is, why as well, there's zoning standards, it needs that fact. In theory, where you'd like to think that the state would check up and annually, or sometime in there will check the attestation of the local municipality, or you'd like to think that if we, as the municipality, go to the state and say, "Hey, by the way, this guy's in violation of our zoning ordinance, he doesn't have a special land use permit, who is licensed," you'd like to think that would state, that state would sign, because that's one of the points.
Don't they have to have a certain amount of money set aside to grant them a license? Is there monetary penalty to the state if you violate one of these laws?
That I don't know.
I think so.
We hear that the first five hundred million dollars in taxes were going to Lara to enforce the setup.
Yeah.
Well, that's just a setup for the department now, because now that MRA has hundreds of whatever number of people, because they don't want to take that out of the state budget, so that's coming out of the taxes that they have yet to collect. So, yeah, and actually even then- So, yeah, and actually, even, even then, just as a side note, even the, even the sharing of the revenue from the taxes requires a action by, by the legislature. There's no guarantee that they're gonna say, that they're gonna share it with the local municipalities.
This is one of my, one of my thinking through the evidence, is that I don't think we're gonna be able to capture everything, all the different scenarios within this verbiage. So, to, you know, realistically, the state laws and what they have to follow are so stringent and so particular that if they're violating ours, they're violating the state's as well. So then that way, the state would be involved anyways, because would be in effect, it would basically be the same thing that we're doing at the same time, and would revoke a license from somebody that's violating any type of special land use here. So, did I communicate that maybe correctly? So if they're violating something for loss, it's gonna be violated from, from the state level, and that's more extreme than just here in the village.
No, that's true, and that's definitely something that you would like to think happens, and especially that they're gonna be more, perhaps more closely than us. The one thing I think about, at least to keep, so maybe we don't need to try and make this language as bulletproof, as it were.
Correct.
Because, not only that, but I do think it's important to keep it, because you remember, the special use, land use runs with the land. So, we wanna have some mechanism so that for the village to hold the special land use, and so maybe there's never a chance for us to use it, maybe by the time we get around to having a public hearing, the state has already pulled their license and the guy who pulls it's gone.
That's kinda what I'm, yeah, because, because the rules of the state are so stringent that, and, and they're monitored so, basically, hopefully, will be monitored extremely well, that they'll be, it'll be taken care of from the state level.
I think you would wanna leave something with these two, because, just, just leave them, just, because, for example, they pull the license within thirty days and then they're gone. To clean up the records of the village, you probably would wanna revoke a special land use, even if it's perfunctory and the app, the applicant doesn't show up, because, so that way they don't check, sell, try and do what they need to do, and they, maybe they need attorney's fees, so they wanna sell the license, they'll sell the land to some other new person. And they're gonna say, "Oh, I already have special land use, I don't need permission." 'Cause the special land use runs with the land, and they would actually be correct, so.
So Mario, with that all said, and I appreciate Justin's point of view, and I think I agree with it. I'm, I'm concerned that paragraph ten can indeed flow out of paragraph nine. In paragraph nine, you say that village manager has these discretions, and should the business owner fail to come into compliance, then it's then sent to us for a full hearing to consider revocation. Then in paragraph ten, you say that revocation of a special land use permit occurs when they're in violation of more than one of the provisions, and, you know, they could, they could ascend, from paragraph nine, they could come to us being in violation of one, but in order to revoke, they have to be in violation of two, more than one. And so, I mean, is there, I wanna make sure that legally, we can revoke a special land use permit.
With one.
With one. That they're choosing not to attend to. You know, they're, they're being adamant and don't wanna fix it. Village manager say, "You're out of compliance, they have nine days to fix it." After that, then they come for us, and we have, we have the option, we have to hold a hearing to consider. But then under revocation, you say they have to be in violation of more than one.
I, I hear what you're saying.
The revocation would occur if I got a malefactor out there who's in violation of six different provisions, and, you know, we gotta pull this, we gotta pull this land use permit, gotta get that. But I wanna make sure that we can also legally hold a revocation hearing when he's only in violation of one. So it was the more than one that I was really concerned about, and, you know, I hear what you're saying, but I wanna make sure that we can legally hold our revocation hearing, because right now, it doesn't necessarily say that.
Yeah, I, I would say the way it would, could function would be, say they're in violation of the recording of, I'd say they, "I don't wanna pay for the recording anymore, I'm not gonna do it." Well, number one, that would trigger the state anyways.
Right.
And it is, but in order for the village's process, we could say, "All right, you're in violation of the recording, you gotta turn on the recorder within ninety days, if you don't, then you're gonna be revoked." So then they don't, so what, as soon as, so the first thing they're in violation of is another section that requires the recording. And then, when they, when they don't do it after ninety days, then they're also in violation of this section. So then we'll say, "You're not only in violation of the first one, but you're in violation of the fact you didn't come back into compliance after ninety days." So those are the two that can trigger that.
Okay.
So that'd be...
Does, does that need to be clarified in the language?
No, I think from an administrative standpoint, usually, or from an enforcement standpoint, whenever you're trying to do enforcement, you wanna be as forceful as possible. So you, you try and come up with, you try and come up with an arm's length of sections that you're in violation of. Because then we say, "Oh, you're also in violation of such land use." We're gonna find as many as you're in violation.
All right, all right, I'll go with that.
To see which ones stick.
I just wanted to be certain.
No, no, I, I, yeah, I think that's a good, good, uh, good...
All right, anything else on paragraph ten?
Just a matter of procedure, so how would the planning commission, how would the matter come before the planning commission? Would that be referred by the village manager?
So with that, that was the extent to which we have reviewed the proposal language, the last page and the paragraph, the text on there. We had, I don't believe we had a chance to speak, uh, speak to at the group. So, I wasn't sure if you guys had a chance to take a look at that, and basically, have any suggestions or changes or issues? Basically, the paragraph E is so that an applicant can know exactly what they have to submit prior to being considered a full application, so there are nine individual items that they have to submit to be, to build their own facility, so first, an application form, the fact that the preliminary state license approval will have to be completed. I think that's actually kind of important, a lot of times they'll say, "Oh, no, no, we're gonna get it, we're gonna worry about it." Personally, I feel that, you know, they can get the preliminary state license approval. The actual site plan, a use statement, so that goes over. So the use statement, that's where they're gonna be indicating exactly what they're doing on the site, and that addresses some of the other operational standards we have listed above. Then specifically, their order of control plan, their wastewater plan, their security plan. Those items have to be submitted, so making compliance with the above referenced standard. And then, I kinda really like this one I made up, because it's something that a lot of times we have requirements that they say the people have to acknowledge that they're going to be compliant with, but a lot of times, not a lot of times, but, but there are instances in which an applicant might say, "Oh, I didn't even know I needed to do that," or anything. This, because of the nature of the use and the fact, the fact that we're trying this out for the first time. I think it's important that the, we have a document in which the applicant acknowledges, "Yes, I understand, I have to do all these things," that I, you know, that, that everything will be conducted indoors, they will be, they will allow themselves to be subject to inspections, they will, they will not allow prohibited activities. They acknowledge and understand the revocation and suspension process for special land use approval, and agree to, and they agree that they will operate by the special land use and site plan requirements. So that way, we have one document that the administration can look to, to say, "You signed this, it's a notarized acknowledgement by you that you agree to abide by," so.
Did we talk about creating a, a form, basically, that covers all the language required in number nine?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what we decided?
Well, we would definitely have to create a form for number one, and it would include, it would list all these items, and then it would also include, we can include a sample, notarized, to include in a packet, because eventually, we'll, we'll have a packet ready for applicants, so that way...
I have a note from...
Chances are, that'd be very...
Meeting last time, next to this, that says attorney review.
Oh, definitely.
So, is that just something you'll do when you present the ordinance?
Rather than inundate them with multiple, we'll just give them one, four or five pages.
I don't wanna cause you to have a stroke. You started working on the applications at all?
Not yet, but that's, but that's a good point. We, we'll have to backtrack it, so that way, because I'm sure, given the popularity of this, you know, we'll have to make sure that, we'll figure out administrative wise, when the effective date is, because we're gonna have to have, eventually, a public hearing of the planning commission, public hearing, I mean, meetings of the village council, and then once they adopt it, Terry, I'm not sure, is it, whatever the village charter says, fifteen days after publication?
Thirty days.
Thirty days after publication? So thirty days after publication of the ordinance is when it becomes effective. So we'll have thirty days, even if a council action, we'll have thirty days to draft everything.
I'd actually like to have the applications in place before we send it to the council. Only because I see us adopt ordinances and they go, "Ooh, we didn't have that application." Yeah, it's just outdated. And the checklist, and the one-stop ready paperwork, I'd like to see all that in place before we send it to the council. So, the council can adapt everything at once. And with the checklist, we used to have a checklist at our zoning ordinance for like the site plan review, to go through A through Q Q, make sure you did everything.
Mario, I don't remember talking about inspections. And I don't know if anybody else does, maybe I was dozing you that time. But I heard you say here, and I said, "Inspections, whoa, where'd that come from?" And so then I went back, and sure enough, item seven on page three is inspections. And marijuana facilities shall be subject to inspection to ensure compliance with all applicable village Oxford codes and ordinances and state law. Okay, who does those inspections? Police or the...
Depending on the discipline.
Number one, the fire chief, you know, any building in our township, any building. Number one. Number two, I'm sure the state will have inspectors at every one of these facilities more than once. So it's kinda like a redundancy to state. You're making aware that you will be inspected by our fire chief. The cops can go in there and check, and make sure you got a hundred and twenty hours of video. Make sure that all employ, I don't know if there's gonna be a certification, like safe foods for restaurants or that, but as I said, there's the state of one that inspect them, but the cops can do it too.
And inspections are, for example, whenever there's construction, there's building inspections, depending on amount of engineering, amount of grading and other activity on the site, engineer might need to come and inspect the site. And these are, all those inspections are covered separately under separate ordinances within the village. This is just a further announcement that they know that you're subject to inspection. And they're into the normal inspections, for example, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, unbuilding inspections. They're all used to it, and it's part of the construction process, we'll have to go through it. Even if it's an existing facility, you wanna make sure the inspector's going in there and make sure everything's up to code. So, and it, it is found in other parts of the village, but I just wanted to...
What if you had a facility that was producing headwinds? With the food and drug administration, or the organization that goes around and inspects for cleanliness like they do restaurants? Can you answer that?
That would be, usually, that's actually the, depending on how the state law deals with it. For food itself, there, I believe it's the county and the state, different departments that deal with those inspections. And then usually, what it is, is we advise, Mario, any inspections you receive, make sure you submit your passing requirements to the village for, so we can have them on record.
So if you had a restaurant, the county health department would come around and inspect you on a regular basis?
And surprise, this is true.
Would, would local county be recognizing this and taking steps to...
Probably depends on how they work with the state. Probably depends on how it works with the state, whether the health, the health department, because there's different levels of, not cleanliness, but there's different levels of inspections and requirements based on whether the food is prepared on-site from, from raw materials. Or whether they're just prepackaged there.
Sure, I understand.
And so, the state law, I'm sure it makes it part of the, all the rules.
Fortunately, it's not something that we, as a local municipality, need to do.
We don't wanna get involved in that.
We just don't, we don't deal with that right now. We don't, we don't ride herd over restaurants, that's all county stuff. Okay, all right, so we don't, all right, so that's good, I appreciate it. I just wanted a little clarification to that, and I appreciate that, thank you. I think it's very reasonable to have that type of item on there, Mario, and I think that probably everyone on this commission would agree that having all of our ducks in a row, when we decide to go forward and take this to the council would probably be a great idea.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry to have a little burden on you, but that probably... The documentation that is necessary, the checklist, et cetera, et cetera, would probably be a helpful addition to this package. So please continue unless there are other questions or comments.
Basically, that we're, I think, posting in here, paragraph F is just, you know, once again, trying to be, even though it's covered in other parts of the ordinance, I just wanna put it out there. The marijuana facility shall be reviewed and made again an approval under the requirements of site plan and special land use. So they have to get site plan, they have to get special plan. And then, and then just to receive that approval, now this is a paragraph, paragraph G. If we wanted to include any specific requirements we felt were applicable to marijuana facilities for determining whether they're, they meet our criteria for special land use. I, in this case, I just fell back on our normal special use approval criteria, so that way, we're not necessarily stating anything specific. But, the planning commission does have the option to have specific requirements for different individual use. That's the whole purpose of special use, is to say, you know, rather than the permitted by right uses that are allowed, probably the site plan and/or construction, all the other things. Special land uses, that's where we pump the brakes a little, and we say, "Eric, you're gonna have to go through this process, submit additional information, and then reviewed based on our criteria." And our normal special land use criteria is compatibility with adjacent property, compliance without ordinances, that sort of thing. So this would be an opportunity, if we thought there was something that would be, that you would have a concern about with adult use, that isn't covered by something else to be addressed, that you wanna include. So when you, so basically, when you receive this new application in front of you, when you, when you're considering whether they meet the criteria for special use, what kind of issues or concerns are gonna have in your head to, to make you feel comfortable to say, "Yes, I recommend site plan and special use approval for this site." And this is where other communities, the reason why I went straight with the special use, this is where my community and some other communities kinda got off the rails a little, and they went, talked about different things, about the moral upkeep of the Africans and that sort of thing. That's not something that I feel is appropriate in zoning ordinance, because the zoning ordinance, as the planning commission, the zoning ordinance, we're dealing with the site itself, how it functions, and having to make sure that it's appropriate in application. And we do rely on the state for that first step of vetting the applicant. As long as they, they're the ones that have this criteria based on general law, that they, that these individuals have met their criteria, whatever that case may be, for operating in this process. So we rely, in this case, we rely on the state, so.
I can't believe, it seems like we've beaten every dead horse, I can't believe there's something...
I know there will be.
Well, and I would suggest, if you go, if everybody goes home and looks in your zoning ordinance and flip through special land use requirements for like uses, like regular retail uses, whatever you're wearing from that, or agriculture uses, or a vegetable stand, and see if there's anything that jumps out. And I looked there, nothing jumped out to me that we missed, but it doesn't mean I didn't miss something, or that you don't want something more than I was thinking, so.
Mario, on, on section two, can you, I read, read through this several times, and, you know, I've done this... for some reason, this is just not gelling in my mind, can you provide, I'm not necessarily clarifications, can you give me an example of something that would, that would, um, that nine, or the G is referring to?
Sure. Start with current ordinance.
So the applicant has to provide, they have to submit, provide all the information that we require in this zoning ordinance.
Yep.
Okay. And shall be deemed to be in compliance...
And adult use.
Right, that's the name of it, that's the name. That's the name of four dot one dot twenty-nine.
Then, and...
And shall be, shall be determined to be in compliance with all standards for granting special land use approval.
So.
Of zoning ordinance, okay.
So in your zoning ordinance.
I just can't think of an example.
I know.
I mean, I guess I'm not, it's a redundant statement. You're not getting a special land use unless you're filled out with, like, talent, you got it? Okay, that's kind of what I thought.
It, it is, and, and, and the way, maybe one way to look at it is, the, all the things that we've been going over these past meetings are specific, you know, set, static, I mean, physical and vocational items we can all look at and then wrap our head around. The special use approval criteria is supposed to be a little bit more broad. It's supposed to be a little more conceptual. So for example, the first one, uh, is the location scale and intensity of those use shall be compatible with adjacent uses in zoning. Well, they're, you know, determining compatibility. That's all it says, is you, you can determine if it's compatible. I would say that because of all the specific standards we put into our ordinance with all the definite, with all the issues we're going with, uh, to make sure that the, the district is setback from each other and all those, those are what we're, those are the actual quantitative ways we're trying to make sure that this is compatible. The paragraph A for criteria is just to say, you feel it's compatible.
It's a closing statement, yeah.
Paragraph B...
Read everything, you did everything. Here it is.
Yep.
You have to have read everything, yeah, you have to have done everything.
This is not a laundry list, you don't get to...
Don't read one from call the first sentence.
The last sentence.
Right.
All right.
So, and, and you need that more as you go into these other criteria. For example, the proposed use shall promote the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner. So that's one of your criteria you look at when you, when you have them. So the proposed use shall not adversely impact the social and economic well-being of those who will use the proposed land or activity, residences, businesses, and landowners nearly adjacent or the village as a whole. So the intent is, it kind of is, back in the day, ordinance, ordinances are a little bit more vague, even more vague than this, and they would say, you know, morally upstanding kind of situation. A lot of times those criteria are written so that if, for, for, for more, for not, for, for some, for, trying to dance around this, trying to, so that way people can not have a concrete answer to say, I don't want this in the, in the village. So they can say, I don't believe this is gonna be socially and economically desirable. So that's one of the reasons they have that. But that's one of the things that's...
Regal order.
Regal order. The proposed use should be compatible with, in accordance with the general principles and future land use configuration of the village master plan, that's remote the intent and purpose of this ordinance. So that's a little bit more substantive, in my opinion, because if you know, you're looking at the master plan and that has some criteria for goals and objectives, one of them could be, like in this case, I would say, one of them being is like, you know, one economic activity in the village by allowing to the special land use and after going through all these list of criteria we laid out in front of them, it's gonna be an economic benefit to the village, so therefore it's compatible with the master plan. Okay, so.
Jack, are you ready to put this to bed?
Yes.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Do we have to come up with parking requirements for each of the permitted facilities?
Um, right now, I would say when it comes to growers and processors, I'd use the industrial requirement to handle people. And then when it comes to retailer, I treat it like any other retailer, like X number of square foot per person.
Requires X number of parks.
Yeah, parking, based on, based on the square footage that's available to the, um, the public. And in these particular cases, it'll be, I know for medical marijuana facilities, they actually have a waiting room, and then there's a lock door, and then once that person gets in, then there's a, there's a fit, there's a floor area in which they can peruse the product and everything. And those are limited to the number of people in there. So that kind of governs how much people are gonna be on the site. One of the things...
We don't have to talk about that in the ordinance, because at the time that we're reviewing site plan, that would all be part of it.
That's correct, that's correct.
Yep, that's right.
If, if I see anything, let's just tell there in terms of previous ordinances that are approved, recent kilometers, specific to marijuana retailers.
I've been a while since I've seen that.
And it's gonna be one of those things where...
One-handed.
We have to remember that the parking standards are based on, I don't know if it's an R factor, the statistical mean average or whatever statistics they use to come up with that. So a lot of times, even for certain uses, if it's just very popular, there's just gonna be a lot of people there on the first day, on opening day, and so that's just, you know, the parking standards can't be always, and that's one of the reasons why, you know, K-marts and, well, Walmarts, I guess.
Walmart, no.
Walmarts now have the massive parking lots, because they want to be able to park everybody on Christmas Day.
Sure.
Or the weekend before Christmas. Well, that's one weekend out of the year that we're living with a sea of asphalt. You know, whereas the most of our parking standards are at a statistical mean.
Today, the history channel was all about the evolution of marijuana. Went from the thirties to the Colorado and opening, opening day in Colorado. They were wrapped around the block like three times.
Wow.
They sold, I forget, one thousand four hundred pounds the first day.
Wow. Cal, are you ready to put this to bed?
I am, I just, I want to know what the next steps are, but I'm ready to, we'll see about it.
We'll talk about that in a minute, but otherwise, unless there's anything else we want to discuss on here. Valerie?
Good.
Are you sure? Victor Hillman?
I like this, no, I am gonna ask Mr. Masquez, Justin, Justin, is this his first name? If he could think of any, he's in the parking, might be more, because he's more familiar. If there was anything special he thought made for parking or anything that jumps out at hand, but I certainly can't think of anything else.
I'm fine.
Right, Mario, you, um, you had your walking here. Um, if you can begin to make changes on this and perhaps begin working on, uh, your documents, uh, we'll see how that goes going forward, and we'll discuss it at our next meeting next month. How are we doing on our timeline for trying to get all this done, like in one year's time, right?
I think we're, we're pretty good at right now.
I think we're rocking it out.
Yeah, it does seem like it, because, you know, the approval process, you know, it's about scheduling the public hearing, so in theory, say, say you want, depending on how clean you want it in front of you, we have one more revised version to go over next month. Depending if you want a clean version to look at in November, and then say, okay, now you feel comfortable, if you want to sketch set a public hearing, theory you could have a public hearing in December. And then depending on the reaction, you know, at some point after that, you'll make a recommendation to council and be in council's hands. So in theory, it could be a, a soon as January, in council's hands.
Mario, what's your opinion of this work product here in respect to what you've seen out there?
I definitely think it's very thorough, it's very, uh, comprehensive, and, but I also think it's very clear, but the benefit of that, I think, is that it's clear-cut. It breaks it down into different sections, it stays focused on zoning, stays focused on the uses, and it's not something that I don't think is gonna be that intimidating or daunting to professionals. They, they, as I mentioned, medical marijuana facilities, I've dealt with those applicants, those that are professional, they'll, they'll knock it out. They'll, they'll, they'll be, they're used to this level, not level of scrutiny, but level of detail. Because they understand, they want to be, uh, they're, they're good operators and they want to be members of the community and they...
They hire lawyers.
Yeah, they have...
They hire lawyers. So this, do you believe that this is thorough enough without being overly restrictive?
Well, I'll say, I'll say, I, my personal opinion is I think we've done a pretty good first shot. But we'll see how the lawyers deal with it. Because I, I mean, I think maybe if, maybe what we could do too, maybe if it's okay with your advice permission, I'll forward, when I forward your revised draft, you know, before that same revised draft to Bob.
I would like that.
So that way we can actually get his impact, because I, that's important too.
Yeah, I'd like...
And the MAPs are helpful.
In the MAPs, yes, yeah, absolutely.
Um, I'm...
Well, wait, on your point, the MAP.
Right.
Oh, the MAP, correct. Uh, I have also in my mind, like a question about, I'm not sure this is where you bring it up, but we have information from different communities about different problems and different issues, and, um, it feels to me like we've talked through all kinds of scenarios here, but I just want to raise the issue because we also have heard plenty of other reports about problems in various forms. So do we need to address any of that before we move on? Any of the municipalities that are having problems, that are feeling like they need to warn other municipalities? Or, or can we presume that this ordinance is, uh, strong enough and tight enough to address our needs in our community and not worry about some of those other reports?
How is that information available, listening? In what form?
Um, I have seen it in emails and in, um, other communications of that sort.
Are there concerns about the visits to the site or just the operations? That people weren't aware that something like this could occur and such?
This went, this went all, all wrong and warning other communities, you know, you're gonna have problems with this and that, and so, and they don't seem to be really specific when I hear or see these reports, but I definitely have seen them and I, we did talk about that, so.
I think the one that you saw is probably the one I saw. I think they had approved medical marijuana, and they just went right into there and they were not, in my opinion, they were not ready for what they were doing.
It seemed that way.
Is that the one that you were talking about?
I think, I think so.
They had definitely jumped into the medical marijuana and they, they had disastrous results.
Were prepared, it's how we are prepared.
Well, did you call, I mean, this came from a lists or discussion that I could understand, just because if the information's out there, wouldn't you want to know what they're experiencing? So their phone numbers were there, their, their townships or their municipalities were listed. That's really up to you, you know, in due diligence. I would, I haven't myself, because I'm not really, um, part of this process and I don't want, you know, my opinion doesn't really matter.
Would you be able to take that on?
No, I'm not gonna be able to do that.
Okay.
I'm not sure it needs to be taken on. I mean, I understand what Terry's recommending, but the kinds of things that I saw just weren't that very specific. I think there wasn't enough, to me, it was, it sounded like a lot of hearsay, it sounded like a lot of hysterical reaction to things, and I, I don't want to spend time tracking that down. I feel like if they were concerned, I'm pretty sure Mario would have brought it up, it would have come up before now or in our other, um, research. But because that information was forwarded to me, I didn't want to not say something about it.
I will say that from my, I'm sorry.
That, you're probably gonna answer my question. Have you, have you or your organization looked at anything like that in terms of real-world challenges that are being experienced by other communities like us that are trying this?
Well, the only thing I, I can say that I've, I've heard is not, I haven't really seen anything from a, from a news source standpoint, but definitely from my, from what I've heard from other developments and developers and applicants and that sort of thing. I, from what I hear, you know, basically up north in Traverse City area, that sort of area, that they embraced it so wholeheartedly that the, that the, the community wasn't ready for the quantity of, of, of facilities that they ended up receiving, and then, and then the subsequent traffic that that was gonna generate. So I know that's kind of a colloquial thing that people have talked about, that it's just so massive. Um, I, there's, um, other, and, and honestly, I mean, I, uh, in other communities I've heard, for example, the largest number of, uh, license I believe are in Washtenaw County in Ann Arbor. And when you drive around there, you don't really see it. Honestly, they're, from, from what I've driven, when I've driven around there, you used to see more of them, actually. And they were more prominent and like the locations based on the setbacks and the distances and everything. And I don't know if they just haven't become operational yet, or it's just the, the method of their signage or what, but...
What, what are you talking about, distribution?
Just distribution.
There is, there's medical operations.
Right, yeah.
So you don't see any around here, but you know, there's two Irish girl operations around here.
Right.
And nobody even knows it.
Right. And that's it, but that's what I was gonna say, is they believe that in, in, in Ann Arbor, there's supposed to be, I want to say in the thirties, in a number of medical dispensers. But I don't, you don't see them, you don't really see them as any kind of massive thing. And there are, I know of two downtown, well, depot town in Ipsilanti. But they, honestly, it used to be, I think it used to be a tattoo place and now it's just a medical distributor that just changed the neon, the shape of the neon sign, their window. And it just has a lot of doors.
Same cost.
Maybe, yeah.
Sounds suspicious.
But I, but, you know, depot town is a very popular place for eating and it's pretty cool. And maybe good on the eat, you know, really, kind of difference. And that's not to say that it doesn't happen, because I will say that I didn't run into cross to an African that was looking for a new site for, uh, their business, because they said they were up in a, kind of smaller village, uh, in the, I want to say it's either the plum or over close to Bay City. And they said in their, in their small village, it was like there were just too many of them. I don't know what he felt was too many, but...
That's the kind of thing, I mean, I, I hear things, but they're not very specific.
No, exactly, so. But I, but you know, it could be only a person's personal preference or that, I mean, I don't know. Yeah, I think...
I don't think anybody can think of everything, and I think you are gonna have some problems. You know, but you won't know what, you won't know, I mean, you don't know what you don't know, so.
If we didn't have problems the first year, I'd be stunned. I mean, because any new business, we're gonna have problems, and we...
Yep.
Well, I will say though, that when it came to the medical marijuana facilities, the, uh, number one, they had a year to wait, and then I know that when they had bummer, the, that board was eventually perceived as being too slow, so that's why they were disbanded and that's why they established MRA. And MRA, uh, in addition to the emergency rules that they're doing, uh, it seems to be more, not only that, but they're very, they're supposed to have a lot of higher turnover, excuse me, their, their timeframe for turnover of an application is much quicker. So when, when they, when they start going through the process, they'll probably see eventually if there's gonna be, once again, a, a huge number of facilities suddenly opening up. I don't know.
Do a little bit of due diligence on this issue. I work pretty closely with the Michigan Municipal League, and I know they're really on top of this subject. They do podcasts every Monday morning about it and stuff like that. So I'm actually going to the league office on Friday, I wouldn't mind talking to them there.
That would be great.
See what they've heard from their member communities and report back.
I would certainly appreciate that. At least that'd be a data point.
Yeah.
And if somebody asks, I can say we have done due diligence outside of our own little review.
Yep.
All right, Mario, are you complete then with, uh, our discussion regarding, uh, adult use marijuana?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. I'll then move on, I'll close that issue and move on to new business. As you can see on our agenda, we have none. I'd open this up to public comment, and if anyone wants to have a comment, I'd be happy to hear it. Uh, there being no comment other than our friendly members of the press and media. I'll move on to consult administrative comments. Madam Secretary, any comments?
I have anything, or you know?
All right. Then, Mario, any closing comments from you being our consultant?
Yeah.
Of record? All right, commissioner comments. Jack, would you like to say something about the, um, Oxford Township?
Uh, yes. My site plan approval with special land use for cultures was approved. Talking with them, uh, they're gonna hesitate on when they want to open. Talking with them, they're gonna hesitate on when they want to open and start building. They may do it in conjunction with the M24 project. They don't want to build it and now all of a sudden, fifty thousand people don't come by every day. So that and our Tullamore subdivision with forty-nine homes is approved and that's moving forward.
What about Beaumont?
Beaumont, you won't know a definitive answer until after September 30th.
What is the home of the forty-nine, which one's that?
East Dranger, east of M24 on the south side. Notice the drainers all been reditched and converted and vision site clearing and water runoff control. It's still, but if you go down there, you'll see Tullamore.
On the south side?
Yes.
Was it originally planned for the north side?
There is still Tullamore for the north side, yes.
Okay, that's it. All right, good, thank you. We do not have a member of the zoning board here tonight, so I don't think we'll take any, any comments from them. Kelsey, any, any closing comments?
Are we having one more meeting and then sending it to Bob Davis or to...
No, we're sending it to Bob right now.
Sending it now, okay.
So the long wish...
To the draft you get, it's the draft that Bob...
Mario will send the draft that we get soon to Bob Davis also. And the draft that we get will also include the map. And that's good. So Justin, any closing comments from you, sir?
No comments.
All right. And none from the chair?
None from me.
Okay, good. All right then, that being done, we are ready to adjourn. I would accept a motion.
Support.
Eight thirty-four, I have a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor of adjournment, I say aye. Aye, okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.